Good evening and welcome to the first of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Sanitation meeting for Monday, November the 4th, 2019. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Dave Harrison.
Dan McMillan.
Clark Trezger.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
Thank you, Board. You have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, October 21st, 2019. Floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none.
I have none.
No questions, comments, or corrections, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you. This evening, Board, we have three pages of wastewater claims in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty-three cents. Floor is open for any questions or comments.
I have none. Thank you.
I have none.
No questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to approve the wastewater claims dated November the 4th, 2019, in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty-three cents.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. We have no unfinished business to carry over, and we have no new business this evening. Comments from Board members?
I have none.
I have none.
No comments, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
The meeting is adjourned at 6:02 PM. We will begin the Board of Public Works and Safety meeting as soon as we reset. Good evening and welcome to the second of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Public Works and Safety meeting for Monday, November the 4th, 2019. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Dave Harrison.
Dan McMillan.
Clark Trezger.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
Thank you, Board. You have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the last meeting dated Monday, October the 21st, 2019. Floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none.
I have none.
Thank you.
No questions, comments, or corrections, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you. This evening, Board, we have twenty-seven pages of corporate claims in the amount of one million, one hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars and fourteen cents. Floor is open for any questions or comments.
I have none.
I have none.
No questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to approve the corporate claims dated November 4th, 2019, in the amount of one million, one hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars and fourteen cents.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you. We have no unfinished business to carry over from the previous meeting. Tonight, we have two orders of new business. First one is position pay increase for our department. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor and Board. I come before you tonight to ask for approval of pay increase of Jason Lamping to the position of third-year firefighter. If approved, Jason's pay will increase to two thousand, five, forty-one, thirty-four per pay period. This will take effect, the payroll starting November 30th, 2019. This increase for position pays in our 2019 budget.
Floor is open for any questions or comments.
I have a comment. I can't believe it's been three years. I've known Jason since he was very little. And we got an emergency at our house, and I was glad that he was one of the guys there. It kinda, that hometown boy being in your living room when you have an emergency is very reassuring. So, can't believe it's been three years.
Any comments or questions from Board members? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the Chief's request to increase the pay of Jason Lamping.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Next order of business is request to hire DPW. Brad?
Good evening, Mayor and Board. Dear Board, it is my recommendation to the Board of Works that the city hire Jake Franklin as a part-time worker at the Department of Public Works. This position will pay fifteen dollars and nine cents per hour and will not exceed fifty-eight hours per bi-weekly pay. Mr. Franklin will be filling the part-time position vacated by Stephen Wilson, who voluntarily quit on Tuesday, October 22nd. There is money in the sewage works budget to fund this position. If approved, Mr. Franklin will start work on Tuesday, November 5th.
Thank you. Floor is open for questions or comments.
I have none. Thank you.
I have none.
None, I ask for a motion to approve the Director's recommendation to hire Jake Franklin.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks.
That concludes new business. Board, comments from Board members?
Get out and vote tomorrow. Tomorrow is election day.
Dave, any comment?
You just beat my record by about fifteen minutes. No comment.
Thank you. No other comments, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
The meeting is adjourned at 6:07 PM. We will convene on our City Council meeting this evening at 7:00 PM. Good evening and welcome to the third and final meeting tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove. And at this time, we will convene our City Council meeting for Monday, November the 4th, 2019. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my left.
Buddy Temple, Councilman-at-Large.
Jim Burress, Council-at-Large.
Dave Harrison, Councilman, District 5.
Dan McMillan.
Clark Trezger.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Peter Mascary, Council, District 2.
Elizabeth Lamping. Council, District 1.
Chris Dupper. District 3.
Kevin Day. District 4.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under special presentations, we have Youth Council. Liz, welcome back.
Good evening. I know it's been a while, and I really appreciate Mayor Buckley giving us a little time to get settled. I'll share a little bit about the tornado, but we missed you guys and we're happy to be back. We ended the year with some graduation celebrations of the class of 2019. For our 200-plus graduates, sixty-two are headed to a two- or four-year college. Twenty-five percent into the workforce, five percent into the military, two into an apprenticeship, and then six are taking the annual year off that they present to us. Sometimes that's a need. As you probably know, sometime in June, a small tornado decided to play with our roof. So that was fun over the summer, and a little bit of work has been done with that. We are down seven instructional spaces, but thanks to everybody's hard work, we started school on time. Our teachers are living in each other's rooms, because we'll probably be down those instructional spaces for the remainder of the year. So just thanks to everyone who was able to make that happen. We have also started our common school loan renovation, which is really just a facelift for the building, so we'll anticipate before the summer of 2021 that that will be finished and the building will look as good as new. In the time we've been away, we've held our first ACT, PSAT, our parent-teacher conferences, homecoming, our College and Career Opportunities Fair, and our Skills Day for the year. And as you may remember, we elect to only hold one Skills Day from now on with the heavy testing in the spring. Our middle school and high school FFA members attended and competed at the conference this past weekend. Our marching hornets are headed to state this weekend, and we wish them luck. We have Into the Woods performances coming up on November 21 through 23 at 7:00 PM each evening. And when we wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, we also have our Third Annual Beech Grove Community Thanksgiving Dinner on the 25th, starting at 4:00 PM, in the high school cafeteria. And Garrett is here for some athletics updates.
Good evening. So I'll start off with the summertime as well. So the tornado affected some of our athletic areas. We got a new high jump pit, a new football scoreboard at the high school, softball batting cage, all needed to be replaced, and obviously was covered by insurance, so it was great. Also this summer, myself and Matt Irwin, the former middle school athletic director, he's actually moved on to Bean Blossom School District. Yeah, so he's gonna be working their district corporate office. He's a, you know, great Beech Grove educator. He started off here as a teacher, worked his way up to a counselor, assistant principal, and was assistant AD this past, you know, summertime and beginning of school year. So he's gonna be a big loss for us. Me and him worked really closely this summer, kinda revamping 7 through 12 athletics, trying to get a good connective, you know, program from 7 to 12. Through those, through some of the things we did together was BSN Sports, which is a program that provides equipment and uniforms. We struck a Nike deal with them. So that is helping, you know, revamp some of the uniforms that we have, getting nice uniforms for our kids, equipment. There's a kickback on the backend, so we can afford more equipment to buy. Online Student Pass is another initiative, so offering a student online pass with their phones. You know, a lot of times with the pass with cards, they lose them. So now with an online student pass, we offered a very cheap rate of twenty-five dollars for the entire year to attend any athletic event, and it's on their phones. So I don't know what high school kids that run around with their iPhones or cellphones, so. Just recently, we worked out a deal with Pepsi. So we haven't had a Coke or Pepsi deal in the past five or so years. And reaching a deal with Pepsi will provide more annual money to the athletic department, as well as, you know, good rates for ordering and shipping to the school to provide the product to school. Focusing more on the athletic side, we just had our fall awards night, which once again, the 7 through 12, we did middle school and high school together at the high school this past Wednesday night. And we thought it was a pretty great success, great attendance. We went through the beginning awards together, and then we broke out into their sports, so that the football team and volleyball, cross-country, all those programs were together, middle school through high school. So it's a good chance for the middle school kids to see the high school coaches and players and, you know, see what their programs are like, and hopefully, you know, build that, you know, relationship to continue on through high school. Just a few quick highlights of the students. ICC all-conference was Elizabeth Foster. She placed fifth in the ICC tournament, and then she was eighth overall in the county. Chung Baoi was named ICC for boys soccer. Chumaya Crawford and Romia Echols were named for girls soccer. Josh Fryer, Gavin Mitchell, and Tron Washington were boys football. And if you don't know Josh Fryer, he's also been named a U.S. Army All-American. So he'll be attending the game on January 4th in San Antonio, Texas. So it's basically equivalent to what would be McDonald's All-American for basketball. It's like the top of the top high school players in the nation. So it's a really big honor. He's also gonna be, he's also committed to Ohio State to play football there. So that's a really big, you know, obviously for our community, to see a kid like that go on to play in such great programs across the country. I think, last but not least, obviously, winter sports now are underway. We had girls official practice start last week. Wrestling and, wrestling started today. Boys swimming and girls swimming will start sometime this week, and then boys' basketball starts on Monday. So winter sports are getting geared up, ready to go as well. Thank you.
I hear that you're, I hear that the JV football team did quite well. They only lost one game?
Yeah, JV football lost one game this year, and actually, our eighth-grade football team, between seventh and eighth grade, they're two years together, they didn't lose a game at all. So it was undefeated season both there.
Have a great night.
Thank you. Council, you have two sets of minutes. The first one is October the 7th, 2019, is up for approval. I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from October 7th.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. The second set of minutes is October 21st, 2019 meeting. I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'm gonna abstain from voting. I wasn't there.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for October 21st.
I'll second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Public comments, Counselor?
Yeah, there's one, there's James Wilder. 160 South 16th Avenue, Beech Grove, James Wilder. Reason why I'm asked to speak this evening is with the, as we move forward with the new trail coming through Beech Grove City Park, I have spoken to the Mayor and my councilmen regarding some concerns that I have a couple times. One being the placement of the trail versus my property line. For those that are not aware of my property, it's listed as 160, it's listed 16th Street, but it actually comes into the city park off 17th On Man Road. And the majority of the field at the bottom of that hill is owned by my family since we bought the property in 1970. So I'm not against, per se, this trail, right? I'm not totally against it, but I don't feel that there's been a firm property line established by the city when they're wanting to put this trail in. When I approached Mayor Buckley about it earlier at a planning meeting, you know, it was even kind of looked at that part of the park road might actually be built on my property, which easement has never been granted and/or compensation offered. So I'm here to ask the city to provide a stake survey to establish a hard boundary line in, on the property there that runs along the park road that I think is actually 15th Street, along the creek, before culmination of the trail, you know, work begins. I just think it would be good to have a hard property line done by a stake survey to establish whether easement does need to be bought, how far can the trail come in from the road, and those type of issues.
Can we contact the Marion County Surveyor's Office and just ask that question?
Well, so we have a survey, but there's no boundary stakes. And when you look at the survey that I have a copy of, I believe the office, the Mayor has one, the road isn't drawn to scale with the rest of the property. So it does show that the city owns part of the field, and I own part of the field, or the parks, right? Part of the fields is a park. But there's not a clear determination of how far back from the park road does the city's property end and my property begin. And it hasn't been staked, to my knowledge, since I was a very young man, probably before I was even 10 years old, was the last time that the property was staked. And I believe that was because there was some work being done by the city that caused an issue with our sewer syst, with our septic tanks, and we had to be actually hooked onto the sewer. So there had to be some survey work done to, I think, establish easement for some sewer line at that time. So, you know, I'm not, and I'm not totally against the trail. I don't, I don't know if I've totally come to grips with it being in my backyard, per se. But I think, you know, as they say, good fences make good neighbors. I think in this instance, it would be nice to, you know, to establish that hard property line, especially with the trail being 12-foot wide, which the original plans were agreed upon, because it came directly through the middle of the field, that that was my property, and then adjustments were made, but there's no concrete property corner set in the park there.
But it's been surveyed before, you're saying? It has been surveyed in your lifetime?
It has, and my memory of that as a young child, and what I've been told by, in my discussions with Mayor Buckley, is we differ on where the property line is. We both agree that one of the corners is basically in the road, but the corner to the north, how far back it is off the road is kind of what's more at dispute.
And you think the state survey would change that?
Well, I think it would give us a hard established line to know whether or not the 12-foot trail that's coming through is encroaching on my property or not, so that proper easement could be established, yes.
And do you want to pay for that, or? Or how, I don't know.
Well, I think the city should pay for it, is what I think.
Okay. Thank you.
So Jim is one of my constituents. I went over there and looked at it, and then I talked to you about that afterwards, Dennis. The thing is, is the markers that were established originally, when he's talking about when he was young, they're long gone. So there is no current marker that differentiates where, or where his property ends and where the city's property begins. That's what he's talking about.
And the county survey office would not have those markers? The county surveyors office would not?
We're talking about a stake driven into the ground.
No, but the county surveyor would not have that information already, I guess is my question.
I mean, he might have some dimensions, but where the actual surveyor has driven a stake into the ground to denote the property lines are gone.
Well, they could be buried.
That's what I'm saying.
One, I believe, is buried in the road.
Yeah, and they have ways of knowing those.
Yeah, they might be able to locate them.
Yeah.
Are you saying that that's something that, a service that they would come out and perform for?
You could check with the county surveyor's office and see. I mean, that's what I'm saying, if we check with the Marion County Surveyor's Office.
I haven't, at this time.
That's something that we should do. The ones that have.
Thank you, Garrett.
Anything else? Nope. Thank you.
Coach, thank you very much.
The, as with any project that we've done, or that anybody does, there has to be a clear owner of the property, so there will be three or four more surveys done prior to any of this construction. And we can't construct any road or any trail on private property. So if there is an issue, that issue has to be resolved before any construction begins. So Crossroad is our engineer on this project, and they are pretty thorough about doing surveys, and they've done quite a few for us, so I take their word at it, and I would suspect that this matter will be resolved way before construction begins.
And it will, and if it encroaches on its property or there's a taking, he'll receive just compensation under the law.
So, anyone else? Speak, want to speak?
No, that's it.
Good evening. So today, we had two automatic renewals. One was O'Gara's Irish Pub, and then the other one was Napoli Villa. We had one that is a transfer. So we have Walla sold their liquor permit to the Rustic Root, so they can do their expansion. So they sold theirs to them, so we renewed that as a transfer and a new permit. So we'll be excited to see what that will look like when she starts expanding her business, so. That's all we have. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Actually, who did you say transferred their license to Rustic Root?
Walla, which is Brenda Kyle.
Okay, part of 1949.
Well, she had two permits. So she had one for 1949, and then one for Walla. And she had Walla in escrow, because she wasn't using it yet. So she sold that to Tammy at the Rustic Root, so.
Can you spell that, Walla?
They have W-A-L-A exclamation mark.
Okay, thank you.
So, any other questions? All right, thank you so much. Have a great evening.
You should have Greenscape Commission and Compliance Division report, and Financial, Dan?
Good evening, Counselors. We finished the budget and everything has been loaded onto the gateway. The stormwater balance is 252,442.94. Thanks to the website volunteers who continue to keep it updated, no cost to the taxpayers. Financial reports, debt service, bank balances, and more can be found on the city website, The bank balances are listed below. The corporate, as of Friday, was 2,547,456.88. Utility, 742,591.65. And as always, if you have any questions, my door is always open. Thank you respectfully submitted, Dan McMillan, Clark Trezger, City of Beech Grove.
Questions for the clerk? Move to unfinished business. We have none. Under new business, we have two items tonight, Counsel. We have a RDC resignation for Don Webb, and do you have that in front of you, Dan?
Yes, I do.
Can you read that, please?
Yes.
Honorable Mayor Dennis Buckley and City Council, I regret to inform you, I will no longer be able to serve on the Beech Grove Redevelopment Commission, as I will be residing outside of Beech Grove as of October 25th, 2019. It has been an honor to serve on the Redevelopment Commission for the past seven years. I wanted to thank the City Council for the trust and confidence in me. I would also like to thank Mayor Buckley for his leadership in working with the RDC, including attending meetings and keeping the RDC apprised of important city matters. I would also like to thank Ron Mo, Kathy Chapel, Tara Wolf, Ed Bell, and Dr. Paul Kaiser for their continued support. It has been a pleasure to serve with such a great group of people. In the past seven years, a lot of great things have happened in Beech Grove, and I am proud to have helped and played a role in many of them. Beech Grove Station was huge for the city. Our Greenway coming in 2020 will also be a great enhancement for our community. The new CSX development should be a great opportunity for Beech Grove. I wish all of you and the citizens of Beech Grove continued success and prosperity in the future. Sincerely, Don Webb.
Thank you, Dan. I'll ask for a motion to accept his resignation.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Don is a appointment of the Council. So you have a couple options. You may want to appoint someone to fill out the rest of his term. They have one more meeting this year in November. They do not meet in December. His term will be up. And then January, the Council has two new appointments to the RDC, so I'll defer to the Council President.
Well, like we've done in the past, we'll look out in the community to see who might have an interest in that, and then bring it forward to the Council, so that we can vote on those, not just those, but any other vacancies in other offices and so forth. Anybody else have anything they want to add to that?
Did I miss anything? Do we need to appoint the President of the? They vote on that.
They vote on that.
Your role, you have two appointments to the RDC. And both of their term is up at the end of this year. And then the Council next year will have two new appointments. Those terms go a year at a time. So you have the option to appoint someone to fill the term out, or just wait until next year.
Mr. Garrett, would you be interested? Please?
Well, you know a way to get right to the point, don't you? Man, I don't like to leave a vacancy on a, you know, something as important as that, but I think some things that need to shake in here in the next 48 hours before I would like to see a decision made.
They meet again the third Thursday of each month, isn't it, Kathy?
Yes.
They meet again a couple weeks, and then that's it for the year.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, that would be it, wouldn't it? So basically, if we don't do it tonight, they'll be without for that meeting, and then no meeting in December, you said?
Yeah, it'll be vacant until beginning of the year.
Don't feel any pressure, Mr. Garrett.
Hey, my wife's here.
Well, they can still have a meeting. They'll have a meeting, yes. They'll have four people.
Whether or not you.
Why don't one of the council members just serve out the one meeting?
Yeah, Vito.
That'd be the easy way to do it.
What? Vito, you're, what are you saying?
One of the council members that serve out the one.
Wait, I swear, if I raised your hand, you didn't, so you're the guy.
What do you, Mr. Run, what do you think?
Because some of the statutes have a requirement that common counsel... a requirement that common council approve action of the RDC.
Council member can't serve because of conflict?
I know nothing explicit, but implicitly that may be the case.
And we're, we're talking, we're talking one meeting and if the council's gonna make an appointment, we do want to make sure that we've had time, uh, for everyone to, uh, have the same opportunities as well as make sure that, uh, that we make, uh, the proper choice.
Evan, your son's out there. He looks like he needs something to do.
What about you, Nathan Rinks?
What do I do?
For one meeting.
Kevin Junior.
I see where your job can be most difficult, Chief Swartz.
Right there.
Third Thursday.
Not this year.
Not this year.
I will make a motion to appoint Nathan Rinks for the, to, to finish out Don Webb's term.
Can they serve in a paid position as an employee of the city? I mean, as, uh, on that? I thought there was some rule change on that.
Isn't Ed on compliance? And he's on the RDC.
They can be an employee. I say no issues.
I second Nathan Rinks.
Yeah, you're the-
In a minute, you will be.
You're the president of the RCC.
Just a second, you will be.
Mr. Garrett, you could still challenge that.
There's been a, uh, there's been a motion for, to put Nathan Rinks on the RDC in a second. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
Garrett said aye.
Congratulations, congratulations.
Resolution, uh, number eleven, two thousand nineteen is a resolution for the common council to consider approving the Redevelopment Commission Resolution Number Three as consistent with the plan for development of the CSX property. At this time, I'll defer to legal counsel for the RDC to explain their process, where they have, uh, began, where they're at today and what they, uh, recommend that the council do tonight. Bob?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there more than just one page?
I need the RDC.
Hey, man, I like the hair. Please. Thank you.
Good evening, councilors. Those that were at the special meeting has, has heard a lot of this already, in terms of the discussion that, that occurred at that meeting, in terms of the development of the CSX property. As a part of the process to, uh, attract the developer for the CSX property, it was thought wise to create a new, uh, smaller, tax increment financing district. And, uh, maps were prepared showing the parcels. It is comprised of, uh, four parcels that were part of the consolidated TIF district plus how many more, four or five other parcels? Seven more parcels, uh, with a aggregate, uh, assessed value of seven hundred dollars. That's not taxes, that's assessed value. So essentially, the amount of taxes raised from this TIF district has been zero. There's a, a few reasons to do this. And these reasons were, uh, first explained to us by Jeff Peters, your financial consultant. Because it essentially is zero value to start. Every, all value added by the developer, the current developer of the CSX property, Milestone, and subsequent developers that might acquire those other, uh, seven parcels. You're not getting any taxes on it now. And it would capture that in case these other companies that you might be able to attract need infrastructure, uh, and you could capture, uh, the value that Milestone is adding to that property and use that to develop, um, that increment area. We're calling it the Northeast Emerson Allocation Area. For one of a better term. The RDC approved a lengthy resolution which approves the creation of this new district. But the statutes require a, a three-part process. First, the RDC had to approve it. Then, um, it has to be approved by the common council. You have to approve what the RDC did. And then it goes back on the twenty-first to the RDC, uh, for a hearing at which citizens can come and speak in favor or speak against it. And, um, that hearing will be advertised in the STAR and the, the IBJ. And Alex can show you, um, where the, the, um, new district is and what the parcels are. Act, or, I've got an extra one that is.
So on the big map Bob just handed out, it is the area in yellow that is going to be the new TIF allocation area. If you'd like more detailed information on the parcels, if you look at Resolution Three from the RDC, Exhibit A, there is a detailed map of all the parcels that are going to be included in the new Northeast Emerson Allocation Area. There are eleven separate parcels. Uh, Milestone owns seven of those. Four of those are still owned by railroad, railroad companies. As Bob said, they're all undeveloped. Uh, if you look at Exhibit G or Exhibit A, Parcel G, surround Shelby materials. So that gives you some grounding there.
Of course, it's property that for years and years and years, the city's been trying to develop. Former Mayor Wiley came and said that throughout his, uh, terms, uh, he tried. Joe Wright tried. Mayor Dill tried. Finally, this opportunity, uh, became available. Dennis was able to successfully a- attract them, uh, here. And Jeff, could you, do you want to elaborate in terms of the value of, of doing this? Jeff can say this better than me because he knows numbers.
Thank you all for the opportunity to be here. I did want to kind of touch on the strategy of, you know, why these districts were originally established and the strategy and the opportunity that you have before you today. You know, whenever we have these areas that are difficult to develop, we want to identify and capture parcels that we think will, in the near term, develop into something so that you can harvest that increment and enhance the infrastructure to then develop the rest of the area around it. These parcels were identified long ago in hopes that they would develop as they are fairly close to Emerson. They have railroad access. And the hope was that they would develop turn and create a lot of incremental revenue for you. They have not at this point. However, they are part of the area and part of the parcels that are the support for the outstanding TIF bonds that were issued in two thousand five and two thousand seven. So as these parcels have been identified and are used toward debt service as a group, they are set to expire in twenty thirty. If this development is tax abated for five years, that's going to put you all the way to twenty twenty-five. So you would only collect about five years' worth of revenue. If you take this opportunity today and carve these parcels out of the existing TIF area and create a new allocation area, the clock for the allocation area starts over again. And that new clock, according to the statute, is twenty-five years after you first issue obligations against it. So this will give you a potential revenue source twenty-five to thirty years into the future that you can then develop the other parcels around it by having money to put into that infrastructure. Or you could do other projects that are consistent with the redevelopment area in a whole. The other item that I would really recommend that you do this is if you don't do it now, you will lose this opportunity. But you don't pigeonhole yourself into always collecting these incremental revenues. Every June, the Redevelopment Commission has to decide how much of the incremental assessed value they'll keep and how much they can assign back to the taxing districts or the other taxing units that they affect. So at any given year, any amount of this could be given back as long as it's not pledged toward bonds. So you retain all your options going forward if you do this now. But again, it does not hamstring you into constantly collecting them for the next twenty-five or thirty years. But like I say, from a financial flexibility standpoint, you would be well-served to take advantage of this today so that you have that option and a revenue flow going forward to help you continue to redevelop those difficult areas. What we've done and what will be shared at the next meeting of the RDC in the public hearing is they're required to prepare a tax impact statement that shows all the impact on those overlap, overlapping taxing units. And it is very similar to the analysis that we put together for the annual meeting for the overlapping taxing districts. Other than we have segregated just these parcels, we've taken the estimates that Milestone has provided and what their development would look like from an assessed value standpoint across the acreage that they've, um, purchased at this point for the development. Then we've extrapolated if those parcels develop according to the estimate of Milestone and then apply them to the rest of the undeveloped parcels. We potentially could have about thirty-four million dollars in assessed value. And as Bob mentioned, the current base assessed value for all these properties are zero according to the, um, Marion County Auditor's Office. So all of that incremental revenue and all of that incremental assessed value would go toward the TIF district. And on about thirty-four million dollars, that would be about a million dollars a year in revenue. Alternatively, if you did not capture the revenue, and we've talked about this before with the overlapping taxing units, if you relinquish assessed value back to the tax base, it's not a dollar-for-dollar revenue source that goes back to those entities. It's only about forty percent. So you could collect a million dollars a year or you could not collect the million dollars a year and the overlapping taxing districts will only receive about four hundred thousand dollars. And the reason for that is most of the property taxes that are levied are controlled under a maximum levy formula. So if you add assessed value back to the tax base, you don't add actual revenue to those units of government. It just forces down the tax rate because you have a fixed levy amount of property taxes divided by assessed value. Because the assessed value number is higher, the tax rate drops. All the taxpayers pay a little bit less. You'll also have circuit breakers for the one, two and three percent tax caps will be a little bit lower. So all the units of government will collect a little bit more revenue. But if we're talking about strategy and how to centralize a large revenue stream for projects to be done in the future, you want to utilize the TIF as best you can. Because that's the only way to capture all that into one entity and make those capital improvements to help further redevelopment. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And so what you've described there is, were you, did you assist in drafting Resolution Number Eleven? And the one for our, the RDC Resolution Three?
No, I did the tax impact and I just proofed them to make sure that they're consistent with what we would expect it to happen.
Okay. Okay. And so?
Those resolutions should accomplish what I just described.
Okay.
As far as the million dollars in revenue, is that divided up between the school, the city, library? Or is that just a million dollars in revenue to the Redevelopment Commission?
That million dollars would be just to the Redevelopment Commission.
Okay. How does the school get their money out of that as far as?
I didn't calculate the schools. The referenda part is exempt from all this. So they go ahead and collect that. The amount that is not through the referenda, they, if you did not maintain all that AV for the RDC to collect, we talked about the four hundred thousand would benefit all the taxing units. They would be one of those recipients of the four hundred thousand and they would be the biggest recipient and it's about two hundred thousand on the million. So they would be better off by two hundred thousand if you let all that go back to the tax base.
Okay. My other question is, in fact, I've got two more. One is the library down here. Now it's Marion County Library. So does that, how does that affect them since they're, the Marion County Library versus Beach Grove City Library?
Uh, the same way. They proportionately share, the same as Marion County does. So on that example of roughly a million and four hundred thousand, the library would pick up about ninety-six hundred dollars on the course of the year. The school would pick up about two hundred and three thousand dollars on the year if all that went to tax base and was not collected into the redevelopment area.
My last question for you. Once we start moving dirt to hook up the sewer systems over there or run it to their property, does that count towards the date we've actually done something, uh, to start that?
No, the, the money to pay for moving the dirt for the sewer system is going to be paid out of the consolidated area. The clock on this area will not run until you would issue new bonds if you ever decided to do that in the future. If not, then it would just collect annually into the Redevelopment Commission for them to appropriate and spend at your- for them to appropriate and spend at your approval for the various projects that are consistent with the redevelopment plan.
Is that still the 25- to 30-year length in time since there wouldn't be...
Well, it says, statute says it's 25 years from the time you issue an obligation in the form of a bond or a lease. If you don't issue a bond or a lease in that time period, I can't tell you legally when it would cut off.
Clock hasn't started running, the shot clock hasn't started running in that scenario. Right now, there is no bond issue plan to contemplate because the budget has enough to pay what the Redevelopment Commission committed for the sewer relocation, which for the RDC was about $650,000. And I think the city was going to handle the engineering and permitting costs really well.
So I guess in scenario, if we did not issue any bonds from that, we could actually cut that off at any time out of the TIF district?
Well, and annually, you can give back whatever you decide out of the whole consolidated TIF district, including the allocation area.
All right, thank you.
And one other thing to keep in mind. If approval is delayed and Milestone makes their first phase improvements, they're not going to be able to capture any of that gain because the starting point has to be $10 or $11 million in Phase One for their improvements. So that's the starting point. Whereas now it's zero. So it's real important, if you want to capture that, to complete that by the end of this month. Because the statute requires that DLGF is notified 30 days before the year in which it is to take place through the gateway.
Yeah, so December 1st is the notification deadline.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
I want to add, and just a refresher from our last meeting, that the Heritage Group is the owner of the property. And the Heritage Group owns nine different businesses. Milestone happens to be one of them. They are going to take up between 30 and 50 acres on Phase One. That leaves a balance of about 65 acres. Heritage Group is very interested in developing Phase Two. And there's also another big company that is interested in expanding in our city. So there are options for that property. So I would recommend to you folks that you pass this resolution and that will show these companies that there is capital available to invest in infrastructure to bring in big business long after none of us are sitting here. So I would actually, I would recommend that you approve this resolution tonight. Now, having said that, I will ask Dan, and if you could read Resolution Number 11. How big is it?
It's one page.
Okay. If you could read it into the record, please.
Resolution Number 11, 2019. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of Beach Grove, Indiana, approving Redevelopment Commission Resolution Number Three, 2019, as consistent with the plan of development for the city. Whereas pursuant to IC 36-7-14, the Act, the City of Beach Grove Redevelopment Commission, commissioned, adopted in December 2018, Resolution Number One, 2008, creating the current version of the consolidated allocation area, which may be referred to by the Department of Local Government Finance as the expanded allocation area as confirmed by the Common Council of the City of Beach Grove, Indiana, Common Council. To be consistent with the Commission's Integrated Redevelopment Plan, Plan, and the Comprehensive Redevelopment Plan for the City of Beach Grove by the Common Council, Resolution Number Three, 2008. Whereas the Commission adopted on October 17, 2019, Declaratory Resolution Number Three, 2019, attached hereto as Exhibit A, amending Resolution Number One, 2008, and the plan by amending boundaries of the consolidated allocation area, creating the Northeast Emerson Allocation Area and designating a taxpayer in the Northeast Emerson Allocation Area in order to collect the taxes imposed on the taxpayer's qualified, deprecable, personal property. And whereas, as a Redevelopment Commission of an excluded city, as described in Section One, B of the Act, the Commission was not required to submit the declaratory resolution and supporting data to the plan commissioned as described Section 16 of the Act. And whereas, Section 16D of the Act requires the Common Council to approve the declaratory resolution and plan as amended as consistent with the plan of development for the City of Beach Grove. Now therefore be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of Beach Grove, Indiana, as follows. One, the Common Council finds that declaratory resolution and plan as amended conforms to the plan development for the City of Beach Grove. Number two, the action of the Commission on October 17, 2019, as described in the declaratory resolution, is in all respects approved, ratified, and confirmed by the Common Council. Number three, this resolution shall be effective from and after its passage and approved by the mayor for the City of Beach Grove, Indiana.
Comments from council?
Just a spelling correction. In the first part of the first paragraph, just to make sure it's Grove is spelled with a V. The first section where it says whereas, it's the...
Bottom right of paragraph.
Thank you, bottom right.
Says City of Beach Grove.
Yeah. Spelling.
Any other comments or questions? If not, I'll ask for a motion to either approve or deny.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 11, 2019.
I'll second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Please register your vote.
Oh, well, you know what, it's in, maybe it's...
I don't know if it's...
Maybe you've got it right there.
Show me your...
Maybe your spelling is correct. Well, that, you've got it. See, this is the, this is the resolution we voted on, correct?
This one right here. And I seen where she was talking.
Here's where she's talking.
It's on this one, just the...
You have a different resolution than us.
Yeah, you got the one from the RDC. Oh, is it, well, let's make sure we got it right.
Oh, this is...
Ours isn't numbered, but it's...
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay, so I see.
Right, yours is, yeah.
Yeah. Yours is spelled right.
Yeah, yours is spelled right, so good, yeah.
Maybe we sent an earlier version.
Could be.
We can...
Just run a copy of it, fine.
Before you leave tonight.
Don't want to get you that signature.
That concludes new business.
Uh, Dennis?
Yeah.
If, is Todd Bertrand still getting paid per month?
No, that has been put on hold.
It has?
Yes.
Okay, so he's not billing...
I just mailed him a check. He ju, I just got a bill from him and it was on the last board of works for $3,000. Yeah, I told, told him that this will be put on hold until probably after the first year.
Is that something we should maybe vote on to put on hold so that it's...
Can if you'd like.
Or not getting billed?
Yeah, I'd like to...
Yeah, the last time we backpaid him two months, so...
For what?
Council approved it, I can't remember what it was, but... You can, you can, if you want to, you can do a motion to...
Buddy, what do you think?
Table until further notice.
I think either way, but if you, if you want to go ahead and make a motion and go from there, then...
I'll make a motion that we put Todd Bertrand's contract on hold for the time being.
I'll second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
I'll get, I'll let him know. Right here.
It's down there.
I guess I would...
It's not it, sir.
We got...
I'm glad you did.
We got two of them.
Council comments, Buddy?
Uh, I have none. Thanks everybody for coming out.
Thank the RDC for their work and thanks everybody for coming out.
You know.
Congratulations, Nathan, on your appointment. Hi, if you need business cards ordered, we'll get you some. Uh, no, thanks everybody for coming out.
I just want to extend a gratitude to Don, to Mr. Webb for all the hard work he's done for our city and the RDC. He's put a lot of time and effort. You know, that's a volunteer position and he certainly has stepped up and done a lot of good things for the city. I also want to acknowledge Jim Kaufman for being named the Southside Times Person of the Year. So that's a good thing, thank you.
Um, thanks to everyone for coming out, no comment.
I just want to thank everybody for coming out and wish everybody best of luck tomorrow.
I have one more thing. Let's not forget to help the Police Department of the Shop with the top. It'll be on December the 7th. Help them out a little bit with a little bit of financial support. I know they'd really appreciate it.
The Veterans Day ceremony will be on the steps of City Hall at 11:00 a.m. So the public is invited to attend. Motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Meeting is adjourned.
Hey, Liz.
Tom Pitfield.
You what?
Before you go.
Oh, yeah.